All right, let's call this meeting to order. May we please have a roll call?
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Angela Wilcox. Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
I would please join you for the obligatory.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome to our August 16th, 2022 Regular Board Education Meeting. We'll start off with my report. Wow, next week is the start of school already. It's exciting times. And to kick that off, we've been holding all of our ribbon ceremonies at both middle schools yesterday and today at Roslin Road and, well, I guess Grove this morning. So very exciting times, so getting to see those new spaces. We will be at Sunny Hill tomorrow. Remind me the time, Craig.
One o'clock.
One o'clock. So if you want to take a look at Sunny Hill, exciting stuff. So thank you again to the community for approving the referendum in 2020 so that we could accomplish these excellent goals for our students and staff. Let's see. Okay, so we also held our board workshop today that we do annually once a year. And so in the coming meetings, you'll hear us approve our priorities as well as our board protocols that we've made adjustments to. So watch for that. And we have some changes that I want to talk about with respect to our public comment that we're going to talk about here next. So the board and our community have been dealing with many issues over the past two and a half years that carry with them passion and emotion. We have reached to a point of hearing from both sides of an argument that community members feel unsafe due to behaviors demonstrated at our meetings. The board has tried to be respectful and listen to both sides of an argument. It is obvious that we need to do a better job as no one person should feel unsafe, threatened, or intimidated to come to a public meeting of the school board. I ask that everyone listen carefully to the expectations. We have placed copies of the policy 830, Visitors 2, and Conduct on School Property by the sign-in sheet, as well as on all the chairs in this room, you've probably noticed. And that policy specifically articulates the expectations of visitors. So in our board retreat workshop again today, we also plan to introduce more public forum opportunities for the community, about three a year, which Dr. Hunt and his staff are going to come back and recommend the dates when that could happen. And when we, after we do that and we've got that settled, we're considering also limiting our public comment to one hour at the beginning of the meeting and then having us finish up with public comment at the end of the meeting if there's more than one hour. So please stay tuned for that. Okay, and that's all I have for my report. So next up is public comment. We've come, and I've got a new entry statement that the entire board has agreed to, so please bear with me. We've now come to the portion of our meeting set aside for public comment. We value your thoughts and opinions. We will ensure all voices are respected and heard in accordance with the Board Equity Statement that states that we quote, "recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and the voices of our diverse school community." As Board President, I am responsible for ensuring that we maintain order and that we are able to get to the business of the Board of Education. This may include having to shorten the amount of time per public comment or splitting public comment to sessions at the beginning and the end of the meeting. The Board has agreed to the following rules for public comment, which I am charged to enforce. Number one, address the board only at the appropriate time as indicated on the agenda, following the directives of the Board President to maintain order and decorum for all. Number two, use the sign-in sheet. Number three, identify oneself and be brief. State your name, your elementary attendance area, or your relationship to the district before beginning your comments. Number four, time cannot be yielded to another person. Number five, be attentive and listen for your name. Number six, conduct oneself with respect and civility towards others and otherwise abide by Board Policy 830, Visitors 2, and Conduct on School Property. Number seven, address issues and do not attack people. Number eight, do not delay or impede public comment or the work of the board. Number nine, instead of repeating comments already represented, consider standing to show your support. And number 10, if the public is disruptive, I will call a break, at which time the board will leave the room together. And if the disruptive individuals will be asked to leave the meeting prior to the board reconvening, and the board is committed to the Open Meetings Act, and we will not violate during our break. So this is a board meeting that occurs in public. This is not a public meeting. Public comments is not a conversation and does not necessarily reflect the views of the board. If any comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Hunt to follow up and report back to the board. So thank you for that. All right, I will call up our speakers now. We have less than 20, so tonight we will allow three minutes per speaker. Okay? First up is Jim McGrath.
So I'm Jim McGrath. I'm at Barrington, D-220 resident. I have become aware of recent requests to the board and the district to ban certain books from the library. While I have reviewed those books and I may not agree with their content, I will in no way suggest that the board should ban any books. It's a slippery slope. Once we start banning books on one subject, the next thing will be, and we've had the requests, people objecting to race issues, et cetera, that'll be next. Things about slavery will be banned. So I'm just asking, please, consider everybody in the community should have something that they can relate to in the library. Don't ban books. Thank you.
Next up is Diane Sholton?
Sholton.
Sholton. Thank you, Diane.
Hi there, I'm Diane Sholton. I'm a resident of Barrington since 1986. I am a District 220 taxpayer, played plenty of taxes, and I live right next to Grove School, so I'm very attuned to things going on in the schools. I'm also an ardent reader. My mother told me that my very first word was "book," yes, before mom, a daddy, or bottle. I think books and ideas are crucially important. I learned so much by going to my school library when I was a child, and my mother also took me to the church library, a very cold collection, which had a point of view. But I also went to the public library, and I was able to expand my horizons. And I think it's so important for children to be given a multiplicity of viewpoints. If people want to have their children have only one point of view, they should enroll those children in a parochial school. Public schools are a benefit to the community by mixing different people, different ideas. In Barrington, we don't have much mixing of socioeconomic groups. Let's hope that we can at least get some mixing of ideas in Barrington. I agree with Mr. McGrath that banning books, to me, is just a very blatant step towards autocracy. I think that we're in massive danger in America of losing our democracy. And one of the cornerstones of democracy is our First Amendment, which talks about free speech. And there's plenty of books and ideas that I find appalling. I'm an old person, so when the, I know you can't tell by my face, but I actually am. When the Nazis marched in Skokie, some of the people that are on my political side of the aisle were appalled and said, "They must be stopped, we must stop them." And I and many of my friends said, "No, you know, these are horrible ideas, and it's extremely offensive what they're doing, where they're doing it." But where does the buck stop? If we say, "You can't have your free speech because I don't agree with it," what happens here? So I think that having book banning is a very, very bad idea. I'm glad that we're having this forum here. I don't have children, but I'm the proud grand aunt of 22 grandnieces and grandnephews, and I am the book aunt. I'm the one that supplies them with books, and I like to give them books with lots and lots of different ideas. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diane. Next up is Sue McGill.
Hi, I'm Sue McGill, and I live on Cook Street, right next to Grove, and I am one of your loyal taxpayers and your good neighbor. This is my second board meeting in my life, and the last one I spoke. And I spoke because I think the voice of the taxpayer, who's not a parent, who's not an educator, who's, you know, just supporting you with money, that we have expectations of the school. And, you know, living next to Grove, I love the school. I think it's excellent. But then when I see this kind of pressure coming to bear, I mean, you have people, teachers, aides, the workmen who are fixing up the yard so that you could cut the ribbon today, I mean, you know, they worked the whole weekend to make it a good school. And this idea of pressure, that I want what I want and the heck with everybody else, I really don't think I can support that at all. As Diane said, you know, parochial schools are available, charter schools are available, all kinds, I think charter schools are public, but there's all kinds of ways of getting your viewpoint into the education of your children. Please don't use the public schools that I support. I really think that they are part of the creating a nation that's one out of many. If you're just all one thing, you know, one, I don't want to say religion, I don't want to say, you know, philosophical viewpoint, if it's just one, it's not healthy because we are diverse. And if we don't learn how to live with diversity, I think in the school is where they learn. I have a great view of the little elementary kids learning how to be teammates. You know, they're out there running around, trying to kick a soccer ball, they have no clue. This is how you build a society that supports diversity, by having them out in the field, running around, playing on the same team. And I hope that this continues, diversity and integration, both. So thank you for the good work you do. I'm pleased for you that there aren't 100 speakers tonight.
My name is Lindsay Purgie. I have children who attend both Lyons and the ELC. And tonight, I would like to read a statement that was affirmed publicly by every sitting board member here tonight. The Board of Education Equity Statement. We recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. As a board, we value the multiple perspectives of our students, parents, faculty, staff, and administration. We commit ourselves to support an equitable and inclusive learning environment for all stakeholders. The Board of Education will direct the administration to operationalize its commitment to advancing racial equity. We will encourage the use of high-impact and district-wide strategies that address day-to-day organizational culture, build institutional capacity, leverage our workforce, apply community engagement practices, and focus on our internal processes and procedures to eliminate systematic barriers. The Board of Education will be equitable, inclusive, transparent, respectful, and impactful in how we serve and engage with students, parents, faculty, staff, and the administration. To be clear, hate has no place in Barrington 220 schools, and harassment, bullying, or intimidation of any kind will not be tolerated. Why a commitment statement? The Board of Education wants to fully understand and appreciate the richness and diversity of who we are as a school community while recognizing a history of racial inequities that have taken place within our country and our school system. Tonight, as topics such as a single book at a high school library are taking up time and resources that could be better directed towards serving our students, staff, and teachers, I would like you all to remember that statement. Your job is not to do the job of the staff that you've hired in our district or to hover over an established process. Please return your focus back to the duties of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Dan Kruzak. I've got two girls, 10 and 8, at Lyons Elementary School. Typically, I have my girls on Tuesday nights, and I'm not able to make it, but they're on vacation with their mom, so instead of watching on YouTube or calling in my comments, I decided to come tonight. I'm just amused by the amount of staff that's here for the board meeting. You know, here we are, 2022, 2023 school year, and we're sitting here with adults, educated, supposedly adults, talking about this disgusting material that's in our schools. You're all adults, and you're telling me you all sit here and think that's appropriate to show to our kids? I'm just appalled by this. And to assume that this is an issue about gays or straights or black or white, I have gay friends and they're disgusted by this. I had to show them the pictures of these disgusting filth that we're letting our kids see in our schools, and they're disgusted by it. This has nothing to do with gay people or straight people. It's not appropriate. And I'd love to have a conversation with any of you adults that sit up here and think this is right, that I last night had to have a conversation with my 10 and 8-year-olds about this filth in our schools? I shouldn't even have to have these conversations about pronouns, about boys giving boys blowjobs. Show me a book in our school that shows a girl giving a boy a blowjob. Is there one? Can anybody stand up and say, "Yes, we have heterosexual sex books in our schools"? You don't. And I'm sorry, Mr. Hunt, you say you're, lately, everybody's been saying you're neutral, you don't control the board, you work for the board, but you're in a picture in our community pushing this filth? It's disgusting. And I respect the people that know that I'm here for them on this board. The rest of you, if you've been paying attention to what's happening in this country, your day's coming. Get ready. There's a turn happening in this country, and we're sick of it. I run multiple businesses. I have to be here on a Tuesday night to talk about books, talking about incest, about blowjobs in our schools? I don't know what agenda you're pushing, but this is uncalled for.
Can you give it to Janine? She'll take care of it?
I PDF it and send it to them via email. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Malgojata McGonigal. I do have children in the school district. I'm going to make this really short. I printed an official website of a United States government, their Citizen Guide to Federal Laws, on child pornography. And as a survivor of child trafficking in 1983 in Morocco with my parents traveling, I am going to stand for any and every child exposed to any sexual explicit and any sexual contest that is happening right now, and it has nothing to do with equity, inclusion, or anything like that. Like Dan said, blowjob, anal sex, it's not a sexual education, it's pornography. And images of child pornography are not protected under First Amendment rights and are illegal, contraband under federal law. Section 2256 of Title 18 United States Code defines child pornography as any visual depiction of sexual explicit conduct involving a minor, which in the state of Illinois is someone under 18 years of age. Visual depiction include photographs, videos, digital or computer-generated images from an actual minor, and images created, adapted, or modified by a peer to depict and interfere child pornography to an actual minor. Undeboweled films, undeboweled videotapes, and electronically stored data that can be converted into visual images of a child pornography are also deemed illegal visual under a federal law. So there's a lot of those laws here listed. I'm not here to read all of them. Everyone can look them up on their official website of the United States government. So have a great evening. Good luck voting tonight, and I hope you're going to vote as your heart tells you. And if you voted as your heart tells you, good luck to you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Marv. Still in the real discussion, Lauren B. Boy.
I'm a newbie around here. Hi, my name is Lauren Brindelson. I have five children, and two have graduated through the Barrington School District, of which are both married. I also have one daughter who opted to attend St. Vitator, and I have two boys that are currently juniors and seniors at Barrington. I'm also a local business owner who clearly understands that when I express any kind of opinion, you risk losing business. So you might be asking yourself, why would a business mom and a mom who's basically on the verge of being checked out of 220 even here tonight? The reason why I'm here is because I am concerned by the alarming fact that children today will be the first generation in our time that will never super exceed their parents. And I can't help but ask, why? What is happening today? The school district that I attended, they had a defined, non-negotiable mission of what it was that we were being taught, and we valued core education as a ticket to an American dream. Today, it appears as though we no longer consider a fundamental education as a valuable education, rather we focus a lot of our time and attention on all this outside noise, which happens in every board meeting. We're changing up facts, it's like, really is one plus one, not two anymore. We've become so distracted by preferences that we have completely lost focus on the absolutes of what an education is all about. The scores this last year in our district alone align with all the research that claims that the United States Education Rankings are falling behind the rest of the entire world, specifically when it comes to math and science. We are doing our children a disservice when we are trading out factual learning with preference teaching. We, I'm emotional because you can tell, like, this is something that really bugs me right now. We need to remind ourselves and our children that when you enter the workforce, you're earning a position, not because you're a girl or a boy, not because you're gay or straight, or black or white, or poor or rich, you are earning it because you are qualified for that job. And should you actually get a job based on one of those character traits, I don't know, that you're a female instead of a male, you have to prove that you are qualified, or otherwise, they're going to throw you, you're going to lose your job. You have to prove that you have that role to be able to keep your job. So with the way we are currently educating this generation, about the only title I feel our children are going to earn is the title Failure to Launch. And I don't want my children living in their basement, my basement. I don't think kids want to live in their basements. And so I just really want to challenge the district to refocus the school year on what is the really purpose goal of education. You put it up on the screen earlier, it's to empower personal excellence in every learner. If we take our eye off that goal, all we can see are all these obstacles, noises, and distractions.
Thank you.
Actually, I didn't really have anything prepared. My question would be.
Please state your name.
Yes, sorry, Malgojata, three kids in the district homeschooled last year. Had a great experience so far meeting the teachers that my kids will be having. So my question, you're waving the flags. Are we calling your names? Have we ever called your names? Have we ever made racist comments? Let's do all of you.
Yes.
Yes.
Bring up examples, bring up examples. Two minutes ago?
Marv, you need to address the board, please.
Okay. So pretty much, there is some little group that was formed and that's calling out individuals that are standing for pretty much eliminating poor and out of school. And we're not talking, you know, two people kissing. It's anal sex, it's incest, I mean, you guys have seen those pictures, you know what we're talking about in the books that we're discussing. And I also gave you, you know, what are the repercussions of kids seeing it. I mean, we're being nasty, follow Mr. Namaste M. Fuckers. The guy pretty much calls out all of us nasty names, I'll give this to you, you could find this page, there's many people that are probably here because he called them out to join this meeting today. We've never seen so many people waving flags and calling us all those names as we did today. So this is a person that's pretty much full of hate, full of swear words, and it's calling all those people to be here. They're not here because they want to, most of them don't even have kids, probably, most of them don't even live in there.
There you go. You can give it to Janine, please.
And it could be followed up probably with police too, because it's, that's a lot of hate and just one little person. And few people out here do follow them, so, thank you.
Knew that mine would be the easy name to say. Right. I'm Margat Dollstream. Huff Street School is our home elementary school. And I would, I'm speaking today because since we have raised concerns about the age inappropriate material given on summer reading lists and in school libraries, there are a number of us that have been on the receiving end of an enormous amount of hate and slander that has no basis in fact, including some members on the school board. I created a summary of some of the things on Twitter, and I'm not complaining about being on the receiving end of that hate, but so much of it is laced with profanity, and I'll choose just one that isn't laced with profanity, and that is, "Stop using your kids as an excuse for your racism, your homo transphobia, and your white nationalism." And concerns about pornography have nothing to do with any of that. My friends all, or my children, all have people that are close friends that are part of the LGBTQ community. They have friends of many races. We don't hate any of these people. We're just concerned about pornography in schools, and that's it. Thank you.
Brian Johnson? Brian Johnson? Am I reading that right? Brian C. Johnson? Oh.
Thank you for the mic on.
You can just speak, you don't need to turn it on.
Great, thank you. My name is Brian Johnson. I'm the CEO of Equality Illinois, the state's LGBTQ+ civil rights group. First, let me say, as a former first grade teacher and as a father of a four-year-old, thank you, members of the board and administrators, for your service during what is undoubtedly very difficult times. I'm here to give a little bit of context for what we see happening across the state and across the country. Often, we're hearing claims that sexual material should be withdrawn from schools, but we don't hear those claims about books of Renaissance art, or Shakespearean plays, or even parts of the Bible. We only hear about those concerns when it relates to queer kids and queer people. We are often told that sexual orientation is something that we should not teach to young children. But I can tell you, as a father of a young child, you can't read anything from The Berenstain Bears to Harry Potter without understanding about straight sexual orientation. So it's just queer sexual orientation that people have problems with. Often, we are hearing concerns that we shouldn't teach gender identity to young children. But I can tell you, watching a lot of Disney movies these days, that we are totally fine teaching about cisgender identity, it is just queer gender identity that we do not want to teach young people. And these concerns are grounded in the belief, in the false belief, that LGBTQ+ people are pariahs, that we are nothing but deviants, and that we deserve nothing but shame and stigma. And I am here to tell you that is just not true. We are co-equal members of our community. We are good and decent citizens, and we deserve the same rights, treatment, and respect as our straight and cisgender allies. So I will simply close with this. For those members of the board, for district officials, I know this is difficult work in difficult times. And for any members of the LGBTQ-plus community or their families who are here tonight or are watching, I simply want to say, you are beautiful, you are just exactly who you are meant to be, and I am grateful that you are in the world. Thank you. Our close to everybody here, may grace, peace, and love be yours in abundance. Thank you.
All right, before I call up the next speaker, I'm going to ask that the crowd be silent during the speakers, because it's very difficult to hear the speaker when we hear the noise and the commotion in the crowd. So that is warning number one. Next time I hear commotion, I'm going to call a break. Okay? Next up, oh, I can't read this name either. Kevin? Kevin, is this Kevin Morrison? Okay.
I'm Kevin Morrison, co-county commissioner of the 15th district, representing all Barrington Township on the county board. First, I want to begin by thanking our school board members. I know you often have a thankless job, and I have to deal with a lot, but I am very appreciative of all your work. I'm the first ever, and currently only, openly LGBTQ co-county commissioner. I've had a few individuals in Barrington reach out to question my assertion at the last meeting that anti-LGBTQ speech and legislation lead to increased harm and violence against LGBTQ-plus people, and have questioned why we need schools to affirm queer kids' identities. So I thought I'd share just a few statistics. The ACLED, a data analysis organization tracking data around political violence, notes that members of the LGBTQ-plus community face higher risk of interpersonal violence in the U.S. and are nearly four times more likely to be victims of violent crime. They noted that as politicians and media outlets have mainstreamed the use of increasingly inflammatory rhetoric against LGBTQ-plus community in the United States, anti-LGBTQ-plus political violence has ramped up. Incidents of political violence targeting the LGBTQ-plus community this year have already exceeded the total number of attacks reported last year. These types of attacks are on track to double year over year. A 2022 survey found 45% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. So to answer the question from those individuals about why I'm here, it's simple. It's to keep queer students safe and alive. There are multitudes of books in every library at every school that contain various mature subjects, and living in a free society that values free speech, we should not be banning them, ever. Parents have and should exert the right to talk to their child about what they can and cannot read, but should never get to dictate that for an entire community. The unfortunate reality that we're seeing here and in communities across the country is not parents looking to keep kids safe. Otherwise, we would be hearing about a slew of other books that contain mature themes, including heterosexual content that have been taught in classrooms for decades, but instead are specifically targeting a marginalized community which runs counter to an inclusive society. So to close, I'm going to again speak directly to the LGBTQ students listening. You are perfect exactly as you are, you are loved for exactly who you are, you deserve to feel represented and seen in the books you read and the history you learn, and there are so many people here that support you. Thank you.
Next up is Marsha McCleary.
I'm Marsha McCleary. I have five children, four of which attend D-220 schools. We are in the countryside area. I think you all know me. We have a petition that I'll just update you on that talked about the obscene and pornographic books in the schools. It now has 1,824 signatures as of today, so I can update you on that. Just to be clear, I think you've heard it from some of the rest of us, this is all about age-appropriate content. Any other lens or type of view on that is completely incorrect. It doesn't matter. Some of the books that have been found are not about other content. It's, you know, it could be any kind of sex, it's just inappropriate for the age. And I'm really appalled at this community and some of the people in this room who tried to portray it differently just to silence us, and it's really upsetting me. I care about this community and these kids, and basically, if you look at these books and you turn them into a movie, they're an R or X-rated film in those sections, and it's inappropriate. And that's all there is to it. So stop, stop saying it's something it's not, because it's really upsetting. And any lens or any threats made to this community are not made by these gracious parents who speak out, who own businesses, and put our necks on the line to do the right thing for our children. And I've been doing this all year in the disrespect to my name and my family for doing what's the right thing for these kids. And you shouldn't have to go to a private school and pay extra tuition to get a clean education. You know, and if we have to have a compromise, I'll just say it. What a district has done, and I can get the details for you guys, is they have created a section in the library for adult content. If you have to have a compromise, fine, the parents can opt in, not opt out, opt into the adult content for the students that have to see this material. But that's the only compromise I see here. You know, and then everybody's happy. The parents who don't want their children exposed to this, and they don't want to have to spend money on private tuition to get a clean, non-obscene content education can have what they want, and the parents that want these books available to their kids can have it too. Sure, it's a little bit more work, but we can't, I mean, we have all these other policies that are against this type of content. The kids can't go and talk about it on BHS TV. They can't have an R-rated movie without approval. It's similar. The library is really the only exception to your policies, and I've looked into this. So I just asked that if we need to find a compromise, let's find a compromise, but we just, we can't just keep these books in there for every kid to go in and find. It's totally inappropriate, and that's, we're not backing down, and it is not what's being portrayed by some of the folks here. It's just wrong, and you need to stop slandering our names and stop being so obnoxious.
Please address the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nelda Munoz? Nelda Munoz? Nelda Munoz? Nelda is not here? Nelda's not here? Nelda Munoz? Okay. Steve Zaluski? No need to talk. Paul Rednicki?
Good evening. My name's Paul Rednicki. Live in the countryside area, have a student at Countryside and the high school. Want to thank the board for their efforts on diversity, equity, inclusion. Also, thank you for your time. I realize that today's been a long, long day for you. I passed the parking lot earlier and saw that it was pretty full, the district office. I wonder what's going on there today? Now I know. All right, so I also would appreciate, I also want to thank the board for the efforts to bring an order of civility to these meetings. They've been getting a little, a little rough. I'd like to draw the board's attention to a couple of things. Board policies, and in particular, the recently adopted equity statement, should be reflected in all board decisions, including whether or not to keep a book in the library collection. So that equity statement applies, you know, across the board. As noted by Ms. Wilcox's last, last meeting, definitions matter, and the board needs to abide by objective definitions when determining if a book is appropriate for inclusion in the high school library. So I'd like the board to keep the objectivity upfront. Third, the freedom to read is a crucial part of our society, means a variety of ideas should be available to all. I would ask the board to maintain that freedom in our schools' libraries. Four, I would adopt, I would urge the board not to adopt any compromise solution where parents would need to opt in. What happens if you have a student who needs to see a text like this? Okay? And their parents are restrictive of them having it? Does that harm the student? Okay, at this point, these are high schoolers, they're going to be out in the world soon enough, they can get these materials either someplace else, if not in the school library. But for a student who may need to find their, their identity and see these texts, it's important for them to have access to them. Do not take that access away from them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That concludes public comments. Next up is Dr. Hunt.
Good evening, thank you. A lot of the comments are regarding the booklet, or the district-level review of gender queer, and that is on the agenda, we'll discuss later this evening. So do want to cover a couple of things, as we certainly are excited to be opening up the school year. The board of commissioners does have an enrollment update in front of them currently. As we talked about last month, we were seeing increasing class sizes in both 5th grade at Rose and 3rd grade at Roslin. We have added sections to both of those, both of those buildings at this point. We don't anticipate adding more sections, but may need to add a classroom assistant, if you look at Rose Elementary School specifically. From a FTE perspective, we still do have one in contingency moving forward, and overall, I asked for an overall picture of the district, I thought the board might be interested in overall enrollment. Overall enrollment of the district is down 57 students, but I'd point out that does not include the ELC at this point. So fairly flat with align, aligning with some of the work we've done earlier this year in terms of the study. Also, want to address Senate Bill 818, and I know, Erin, you may have some comments as well when we get to committee updates, but I wanted to address this as it was a topic of conversation at our last board meeting. Since our last board meeting, the policy committee did meet, so the recently updated legislation regarding sexual education stipulates that teaching sex education in Illinois is optional, with the exception of the mandated units of study, which we discussed at our met last meeting. If the school district chooses to teach a sex education, they must adopt the national sex education standards. At our last policy committee, they reviewed Policy 6-60 as it relates to Senate Bill 818 and the standards, and confirm that we will not adopt Senate Bill 818 and national sex education standards. We'll continue with our current curriculum and programming, which is aligned with the mandated units of study by Illinois. Some of the content in the standards, such as consent, puberty, abstinence, and self-management, are covered through our health standards and have been part of our curriculum, as well as legislation specific to Aaron's Law, which is, addresses sexual abuse prevention education. So there's a couple of reasons the committee discussed this, and we talked about them, some of them at the last meeting, but we, we feel, one, the amount of standards, the amount of content, if you just look at the middle school specifically, there's over 40 standards within Senate Bill 818. Just to give you content, that's more than some of our math curriculums, and so it was the amount of standards, in addition to our feeling that what we're currently offering to students is meeting the needs of our students moving forward. So there's no board action to be taken tonight, but I wanted to be clear that the conversation did happen at policy, and we're going to continue to move forward with our health education aligned with the mandated units of study. Obviously, on the forefront of all of our minds, and that team over there is busy getting ready for the return of our students, we certainly look forward to that. I want to commend all of our staff. Obviously, opening school with, you know, 8,600 students is a major undertaking, when you think about all that goes into that, from transportation, to education, to food service, to preparing facilities, but then you add on the amount of construction that's taking place over this summer, and it's just additional level, additional layer. We do talk about ribbon cutting here in a minute, but I want to commend the staff and the administration, administrators who are involved in the buildings where construction happens. It's very unfortunate, but you're put in a kind of a difficult situation as you move through these construction projects. Anyone who's renovated their home is well aware of that, and we are certainly working through kind of final adjustments that may, may have to be made. But I think as we walk around the district and we see these new spaces, it's refreshing to see how space can support education, and that's exactly what's being created by this referendum, and it's only made possible because this community stepped forward and supported the referendum moving forward. So appreciate that, and we're very excited to welcome our staff back. I'll do it formally on Friday, as I address all of them, and we unveil our theme for the school year, which is to be, you know, it's under confidential agreements. Do want to address, I've got some questions regarding COVID. I want to, first of all, just commend all of our staff, board. Obviously, last year was tough, but we set a goal at the beginning of the year saying we want to retain in-person learning for the entire year, and that certainly is, was achieved. We continue to monitor, monitor and move through a pandemic, as it still remains a concern. So a couple announcements, following will remain in place. Students and staff that test positive, they are required to isolate for five days. They can return after, if system, symptom-free, and the CDC recommends masking six through 10 in that environment. Teachers, work collaboratively with students and parents when necessary, develop learning plans, which may include both synchronous and asynchronous education. We are not moving forward with shield testing due to the accessibility of testing. We do have tests available for students with parent permission that are symptomatic and access for our staff as well. We're not retaining the COVID dashboard moving forward. Again, with home testing and the amount and the numbers, it's really not an accurate reflection of cases. We will report to our parents in PK through five, when cases exist, in the classrooms, and will continue to encourage hand washing and dry cleaning, or daily cleaning, and do point out that the district made significant investments in needlepoint bipolarization, did I get that right, Dave? Throughout the district, from a HVAC standpoint, and those were asset funds that we utilized to make that enhancement that will improve air quality for years to come. The news, you know, most recent news is the news about monkeypox. It's obviously a rare disease. We haven't received any guidance, per se, other than they're asking that school district help distribute information to communities regarding this. It's a rare disease, incubation period of seven to 14 days, spreads through respiratory droplets, skin-to-skin contact, and through bodily fluids. One to three days develop rare, the symptoms, and they become, often in lesions that are fluid-filled inside or outside the body. We'll continue to provide parents and community updates as we go forward with that. Again, very excited to welcome our students back as we go forward. So if I could have, is Jacqueline here? There she is, Jacqueline. Not yet, we will vote on the personnel report. There's a recommendation to approve Jacqueline as the new assistant principal at Barrington Middle School. This should be a familiar face to the school district, as she has worked in our district for some time. She's got a bachelor's of science from Western Illinois University, master's of arts and science from Aurora University in curriculum instruction, and a master's from the American College of Education, educational leadership. 11 years at Prairie Campus as a 7th grade special education teacher, a year and a half as an 8th grade math teacher, and six months, teacher is on a special assignment as assistant principal. We have engaged her services already as we prepare for the school year, and certainly leaning on her knowledge with special education. So cross your fingers, hopefully when personnel report happens, we'll be able to welcome Jacqueline officially to the school district. Lastly, or two, sorry, two more slides. You've already covered ribbon cutting. It was certainly just a great opportunity to show off the facilities, Prairie and Station Middle School, or the other, Monday, today, we're at Grove and at Roslin, and later this week, we'll be at Sunny Hill. Again, just like to recognize and thank the community for supporting the renovations moving forward. We did welcome our new educators into the district this past week, and I will just tell you, I want to commend Jordan Anderson for the work that she did in putting this together. I think every year, we try to improve what it is we offer and prepare our new teachers so they can kind of hit the ground running. I had the opportunity to talk them a little bit about the work we've done in terms of our mission and strategic priorities of the district, and how we foresee education playing forward in coming years. Encourage them to do a lot of listening and learning, obviously, but also, they're hired for a reason, to take risks and help us, you know, become better at what we do. So our elementary teaching and learning, secondary teaching and learning...
Of our policy in 6.60 is to introduce the contributions of various communities, including LGBTQ communities, and for us, it begins in fifth grade. So I had some assurances that a lot of the great things that are already in the national sex ed standards, we're already implementing and it's already part of our comprehensive health education and our executive council and administration feels good about that. And also, we do have like a health vision or education that I think is available on our website, right, Dr. Byrne?
Yeah, on our curriculum website.
On our curriculum website, so I invite anybody in the community, or parents, or families who want to check that out, to check out what our program is. So I just wanted to add a couple of those things, and it was very unclear, you know, if we do adopt the 72 pages of National Sex Ed Standards, you know, it seemed like something would have to go, but it was unclear like what had to stay, what had to go, and even if we did, it would be like, it would take an entire year to assess that, and by next year, we're already reviewing our secondary, right, as you mentioned. So just wanted to add a couple of those things in terms of what came up in policy when we talk about this.
Any other committee reports?
All right, let's move to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. For a second.
Okay, I'll remind everyone, there is a revised personnel report, and I will read through what else is on the consent agenda, and then we'll do a roll call unless there's questions. So we have on the consent agenda minutes from both open and close from July 12th. We have the following finance reports. We have the July reports for exceptions in bills, NSLP exception bills, activity accounts at BHS, wage and payroll report, the treasurer's report, revenues and expenditures, and for August, we have the bill list and the NSLP bill list, and we also have the gifts and grants, so thank you to the Partnership for Financial Credit Union, that supplied various elementary schools with school supplies, we appreciate their donation. And then we have the revised personnel report, which I've already mentioned. Any questions or comments? All right, let's do a roll call.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So with that, can I ask you if you want to make, if you wanted Jacqueline to come forward?
Absolutely. Jacqueline, come on up. Please welcome Jacqueline to the floor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Great job yesterday.
Give you more time for your speech.
You want to say anything?
Just thank you so much, board, thank you everyone, I'm really excited for the kids to get here on Monday, so hopefully our parking lot is ready.
And how was the reaction to the new space?
It was amazing, the teachers were actually in there today, filling it all in, so it's...
Okay, let's move to, actually, I'm just going to check in with the board, we've been here all day, everybody good? Keep going?
Keep going.
Okay. All right, so let's move to our action items. The first up, we have a motion to consider the approval of textbooks and instructional materials.
So moved.
Okay, you want to just give us a brief update that we talked about at the last meeting?
Yeah, so annually, the Board of Education has asked to approve textbooks and instructional materials. This traditionally happened in June, kind of after the year, the board talked about wanting to change that cycle, if you will, approve those prior to the year, so the board received kind of the prior list, and then a list with all highlighted changes. There were two or three.
Two.
Two changes in moving into next school year. So my recommendation is that we approve the textbook and instructional material list for the 22-23 school year.
So a huge improvement to bring this forward to before school starts? So very much appreciate that. All right, any questions or comments?
The only comment I have is the same one I made last time, and by the way, I don't want to diminish, this is fantastic, it's so nice to be able to have this before school year starts versus after the school year. With that being the case, though, you know, if I could make one additional recommendation, it would be to put this even further forward. So in other words, perhaps, you know, would it be plausible to have this available at the end of this school year for the following school year? And this way, parents, after the board approves, parents have an opportunity to go to the library, go to the website, and actually look at it themselves, too, because now the window for parents to review is six days.
Yeah, I think, one, there is not substantial change year over year.
That's fair.
And part of what we have talked about from a curriculum review process is coming to the board, sharing with you the review process, and highlighting any material or resource changes in the spring. So I would imagine that by doing that, we would capture most of changes that would exist in this report.
Please keep in mind, too, that because we're changing the cycle, and what you're approving tonight are the core resources used for core instruction at the building level for this upcoming 22-23 school year, but now that we've done this, or you will do it in a moment, when we come back to you in the spring, that's going to be the list for the following year, so families will have plenty of time to review. So this is just kind of that awkward time while we're changing the process, so yes, in the future, you'll have plenty of time. And like we said, there are two changes, but technically, it's only one because it's the same resource, so it's one resource for K2 and the same resource, but the 3.5 version.
I personally want to add that I was really happy to see elementary cursive textbooks on there, or books, I think for a while, right?
I said, do they get to use this?
Well, yes, it is, speaking of Illinois mandated units of study, it did go away for several years, but it is a mandated unit of study again, so students are provided with one unit of instruction on it.
So penmanship came back as a core.
Cursive, handwriting and cursive are two different things, so cursive is a mandated unit of study.
Some of our most historical documents are written in cursive, right, so I think it's good for kids to learn.
They need to be able to sign a check.
And sign checks.
They don't write checks.
They don't write checks.
That's true, they do though.
All right, are we ready for roll call? Go ahead.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the rejection of the woodland demolition bid?
So moved.
Okay, I'm going to read that again. We're going to approve the rejection, so a yes vote means to reject it.
Reject.
Okay, you want to give us a quick update?
I think you need a second.
Oh, we can get a second?
I heard Leah and Barry.
Got it.
I can be first or second, it doesn't matter.
I got you as first.
Yes, so as we've talked about with the Board of Education, we looked at the possibility, potential option of demolition at woodland, and we had a variety of reasons for doing so. While that bid process was ongoing, and bids were received by the district, we have been able to engage with some pretty serious conversations with a potential buyer of the property, so we are asking you at this time to reject these bids as we kind of move that process forward in the next month or two.
Okay.
With the understanding that if this doesn't go through, then we'll have to go through another bidding process to demolish. That is correct.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, and again, a yes means you are approving to reject.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have a motion to approve the license agreement to install and maintain bollards at Huff Elementary School.
So moved.
Okay, give us a quick update on that?
Yes, so one of the safety enhancements at Huff Elementary School is the addition of bollards outside of the building, and I believe, and Dr. Byrne jumped in here, that our bollards actually fall in the village right away, and this agreement is essentially, you know, allowing us to install these and acknowledging that we are responsible for maintaining them moving forward. Correct. And where exactly are they going to be, right on the corner, or closer to the entrance, or? They're on our property, but within the village right away, so you'll see them along the road, adjacent to the school. Will they be multiple? I thought there was like one at each corner, no? No, no, we've got, there are multiple bollards that are there. Got it, okay, I didn't understand.
Not on Huff, but on the side streets?
We've got, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right, let's do a roll call.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Do we have a motion to uphold the recommendation of the district-level review of materials?
So moved. Second.
Okay.
So this is a response to a district review of the book Gender Queer. The process that's articulated for the district is that it would move through a couple of levels, it would move through a librarian review, in which, you know, the librarian would address any concerns, a building-level review, which is pretty self-explanatory, and then a district-level review. District-level review is coordinated by the Director of Library Media Services, and the committee engages a parent, district school administrator, district certified teacher, district certified school librarian, other than the librarian that was in the building of the book or the question material. Committee members are responsible for reading the question material in its entirety, and for making one of the following recommendations: leave material on the library shelf, reclassify the material, restrict the use of the material, or remove the material from the collection. The district-level committee did make a recommendation to retain the material for access to students, so the recommendation is for the board to uphold that position.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
I think I have a couple of comments I'd like to make as it relates to the district's recommendation. So, you know, I think we all appreciate the fact that we've got a lot of feedback from the community, both today as well as in prior weeks, with respect to this book, which, you know, I myself have read, too, at this stage. You know, I guess what I'll say is, I'm so sorry that this topic has even further divided the community, it's a shame, in my mind, that we've gotten to the point where the contents of a book have put us in a position where we need to scream at each other, and call each other names, and put things out there that, you know, may or may not even be true, and just for the purpose of maintenance. And the reality is, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there, as it relates to what the true issue here is, and, you know, for me, my recommendation would be to either reclassify or even restrict, and provide this as an opportunity for parents themselves to opt in to something that they find, you know, appropriate for their children, and this is by in no way to say that, you know, we should restrict this, or even take it off the shelves and say that if a parent isn't in approval, that their children should have no right to it. It's absolutely the right of the parent to give that recommendation. And then, as I read through this, and do additional research, I'm finding that, you know, when you look at even the author himself, or herself, excuse me, you know, she identifies it as mature content, and if you look at, you know, standard, you know, gradations of how this material should be reviewed, it's for an audience that's 15 or over, and for some of these other, you know, critics of this, they have it at even higher age. So for me, you know, the fact that this is available in the high school, I mean, you have half the population of this high school, as freshmen and sophomores, most likely, that may not be at the right age, and then for me personally, I factor in my own family, you know, when my daughter's at that age, I'm not sure that I would want her to have access to it, even when she's, until she is of age, meaning she's a legal adult. So, you know, again, I'm not in favor of saying that this is not appropriate for someone provided their parents are in agreement with it, and I'm not even pushing that we should take this off the shelves and totally make it unavailable, but given the options in front of us, I think my vote has to be no, in order to, you know, follow my conscience. And, you know, over the last couple of weeks, I know I've been criticized for being, you know, God-believing and the like, but this has nothing to do with it, this has everything to do with just allowing parents the right to choose, and...
Two points of clarification, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, please.
Two points of clarification, I failed to mention, I want to. One, there was accusations made that this can be accessed by students in other buildings, and we did ask the technology department to go through, that is not accurate.
Yep.
So this is only accessible for students in the high school, through the library, it's not a core material, obviously, it's not on the core material list that we presented. And additionally, we have looked into the ability for parents to go in and click on books, they do not want their child to check out of the library, so that is something we kind of are finalizing in the board, we'll get some information as early as this week and the weekly, about the possibility of being able to do that moving forward.
Well, I appreciate that last point, you're right, that we are in the process of allowing a system where parents can opt out. The problem I see with opting out, though, is the fact that it's still available in the library, so if you have a child who stumbles on this, or even finds this, and their parents aren't in agreement with it, they don't have to take it out, they can still read it in the library. And so, you know, it's, to me, it's a partial solution for, you know, the ability for parents to basically filter what their children see. And I don't know, I understand that some of the logic is that parents need to discuss, but I don't know if I can put a list of books in front of my child and say, here's what you can't go get, because I think we all know, with children, the minute you tell them, don't do something, they're going to go do the opposite, and it's not about, you know, misbehavior, it's, to me, it's just the fact of life, and, you know, even if my child was the best behaved child in the world, and she absolutely listened to me, I wouldn't want to put it on other parents, I want them to be able to have the right, again, to have the ability to select what their children have. So I guess what I would ask for, and I don't know if this is something that we can do through a motion, would be to consider, what's the term here, restrictions, but, you know, like I said, if given the solution, given the option of either upholding or rejecting, I would have to vote to reject in this instance.
I understand.
Okay, any other comments?
I really value parents' input across the spectrum on this, and I think we've heard a lot of different opinions. I think parents absolutely have a right to determine what is best for their own children, and I do think we have procedures for that, like Dr. Hunt said, parents can restrict access for their children on any book in any school library, but for their own children. So I think we, as a school district, we need to be cognizant and aware that we are serving every single one of the 8,000-plus students in our district, and that includes making sure that our students can access stories that could reflect their experience, their friends' experiences, and could help them build empathy, in ways that are appropriate, in ways that are appropriate, and...
That is the final warning, I need to be able to hear my colleagues as they speak.
So, so there is a reason why this book, Gender Queer, is in our high school library shelf, and it's, and there's a reason why it's not in our curricula, why it's not mandated to be taught, but why it is merely available. I want to point out that our district review committee has read the book, as have I, as have I think a lot of our board members here, it's 240 pages. I agree that, taken out of context, there are pages where when you look at them, you're like, whoa, what is this? But when you read the story of the author, the author is talking about air struggle, the author uses air pronouns, the author is talking about air struggle, and it is a years-long process in determining that the author is non-binary and actually asexual, and has gone through certain experiences to discover the author's asexuality. So I want to point out that the district review committee, in addition to analyzing the book, has applied a legal definition of pornography to the book, has applied a three-part Miller test regarding obscenity, and that Miller test, you, a book must, you know, it has to meet all three, or all three parts, and that's grounded in Supreme Court jurisprudence, or I think it's, if any part isn't met, it would count as, if all three parts do not apply, it counts as obscenity. But anyway, there's a Miller test that was applied regarding obscenity, and the book was deemed as not obscene by the three-part Miller test. And lastly, we have educators and library specialists who are trained in selecting material, and could we be more communicative about our book selection process? Possibly, and I think our administration would welcome any parent or community member inside our school libraries to check out what's on our school shelves. So I think that our district review committee has gone through a very, very thorough process in its recommendation, and I just want to end with, the American Library Association has a statement on access to library resources and services for minors, and this is based on the Library Bill of Rights, and it, the ALA says that libraries and their governing body shall ensure that only parents and guardians have the right and the responsibility to determine their children's, to determine their children's, and only their children's access to library resources. Parents and guardians who do not want their children to have access to specific library services, materials, or facilities should so advise their own children, and we also have procedures where parents could restrict for their own children. Libraries and library governing bodies should not use reading systems to inhibit a minor's access to materials. So that's some previous guidance, because this is not the first time a question like that has come before a governing body around a book. So there is guidance around this, and I feel like our review committee has been very thorough in reaching its recommendation, so.
So I agree with what Erin has said, I don't want to reiterate it, because it's very eloquent, just a couple other comments. As a board member, I want to make sure I represent all students, of all LGBTQ students, brown and black students, everyone who's out there, everyone needs to be heard and be valued, and it's super important, and so this is, this is a bigger issue. I think that this book has had won numerous awards, this book is a story, if you read the story, it tells, you know, as I read the story, of someone who's sensitive and struggling, and it's a coming-of-age book about a non-binary person, and so this is a book that can be very valuable to somebody, and be important to show that you aren't alone, there are other people, and you should be cared for and loved and respected. We're not on an island, many school districts like us, in our neighborhoods, in our neighbors, have approved this book, including Stevenson, Cary Grove, and Wheaton. We went through a rigorous process, we have a process, I respect that our administration went through this process and did what they needed to do, and I think we should follow their recommendation.
Any other comments to add?
Yeah, I would say, I would agree, I absolutely think we should have diverse and inclusive libraries, and I think our librarians do a great job at that. Where I tend to disagree is, I don't believe it's our job as a district, I think we can have a diverse and inclusive library without having, providing minors with sexually explicit material. I would say the author themselves was asked about the book, and they, honestly, it was always planned to come out for the older reader imprint on my publisher, aim for either adults or high teens, like 16-plus. At no point did my editor or anyone at the publisher suggest I censor any of the material or tone anything down. So I, well, so I think our librarians are amazing in their job, and I, so I think it would actually be fairly easy for them to figure out a way to, this book was never intended for children under 16, that's straight out of the author's mouth, and it was written for adults. So I personally, I, the opting out, I, you know, I think our parents trust, not, I think parents do their best, I know I do my best, but I've got three kids, last year I had them in three different schools, we get a lot of information, we get a lot of emails, we get a lot of sent homes, we have parents where English isn't their first language, that's why we offer our website in multiple languages, I mean, having to have parents go through, fact-check every single thing that is sent home from the district, and every single book recommendation, I mean, I want to be able to trust that my children aren't being given or recommended a book that is above their maturity level, and that is where I have, I think some of these books might miss the mark at the high school, when they're clearly not even intended for 13, 14, 15-year-olds. So that would be, I would be with Steve, and voting no, I wish that we could come to more of a compromise on this, as a reclassify or perhaps restrict, I feel that there is a middle ground here, and we're not making it.
Correct. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm very happy to hear that the people that I thought would totally object to this, I'm not totally objecting to this book, which is, which is heartening, I think, I hope we've all read the book, it's really a very, kind of heartbreaking book, I want to quote the author, though, Ayers said, why did we write this book? So the author says, queer youth are often forced to look outside their own homes and outside their education system, to find information on why they are removing or restricting queer books in libraries and schools, and it's like cutting a lifeline for queer youth, who might not yet even know what questions to ask Google, which is, everyone has access to Google, to find out more about their own identities, their own bodies, and their own health. The author said that this book was written for queer friends and parents, because this author really struggled, especially with getting help from parents. So this is made for parents and for other queer youth, but I also contend it's made for their friends and caregivers. So if your child, your teenager, has a good friend who's having some gender issues, and it doesn't have to be gender queer, it could be somebody who is gay or lesbian, a book like this would be very helpful for them, so they can support their friends, and I think it's very important that we have these kinds of books available in our library. I want to clear up some misunderstandings, I've gotten some very mean emails, okay? I don't believe in child pornography, we are not offering this book to our grade-school kids, we are not offering this book to our middle-school kids. There are probably some middle-school kids who could use this book, and if their parents so choose, they can go to the library and get the book for their kids, but unfortunately, it's not going to be available to them until they go to high school. These kids, the younger kids, will not have access to these books, unless their parents allow them to have access to the books. This has been a process that, not only do we do this for Lawn Boy four months ago, five months ago, we now do with this book, we must, we must respect the process. We have professionals in the district that have gone through this process. None of us are librarians, none of us know what a librarian goes through when he or she is looking for books, and goes through the process, and I respect the individuals that Bob has hired through the administration to teach our kids. We're in the public schools, I think we all have to respect the teachers that are teaching your kids. I want our board to spend time on education, social-emotional learning, safety, we've been hijacked these last couple of months, spending more time on this kind of material. Let the professionals do their job, and let us do the job that we were voted on to do. So I am for supporting what our curriculum committee, our library committee, our district committee has recommended. I know it's difficult subject material, I know that there's a lot of unhappy people, I'm sorry that we have a division in the community, I'm afraid every topic that we're going to be doing for the next couple of years is going to divide the community, and I don't like that, I really don't. But, you know, just to be clear, parents can reject materials for their own selves and for their kids, but they cannot reject or restrict access to other kids who want access to this kind of material. So I really feel very strongly that we need to respect the process and vote to support the process.
Thank you, Barry. So I think I'm the last one to speak, a lot of what I was planning to say, Barry, you've already covered, so I won't repeat, but I will be supporting the district committee's recommendation. I did read the book... I did read the book in its entirety, and I'm glad the author told their story. I learned from the book. I spoke to several individuals who would have appreciated this book and been able to, not just for themselves, but to learn about their friends. And so therefore, I think the book should remain in the library unrestricted as recommended. So why don't we go ahead and call the question?
Katie Carum?
No.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
No.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Barry Alchuler?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The book will remain. We still have board business. We have some discussion items up next. I'm going to do another check here with the board. Do we take a quick break?
Can I wait? I would love to be fresh.
Take a, okay. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Great, thank you. Thank you, board members, and we're pleased to be here tonight. I have to tell you that in the last couple of years, Sarah Lager has been with us and been working on the budget. Her primary responsibility as the Director of Fiscal Services really is around the budget and the actual spending that we do. And she she has really engaged on this and is so talented with the work she's doing on the budget. She has really engaged to make sure that what we're delivering to you from a budget perspective is meeting your expectations, is fiscally responsible, and is well put together and organized. So as we, as we start to go through, you know, the budget presentation tonight, to keep in mind the work that Sarah has done, and I've actually asked her to do the bulk of the presentation tonight, so I'm just going to do, hit a couple slides at the beginning and then at the end of the presentation. You will find the format similar to what we've done in the past. We'll start with a recap of where we are on a pre-audit basis, so it's preliminary results from last year, to set the stage for what we're looking at for a budget for this next year. We'll talk about the legal adoptions for the budget adoption. We'll run through revenues and expenditures, and then we'll summarize that and talk about some of our next steps. But as we get into that, I just want to reflect back on, you know, our mission, empower personal excellence in every learner. And this presentation and this topic of the budget revolves around stewardship, which is one of the strategic priorities for the district. So just to set that context for you as we roll into the budget discussion.
Thank you so much.
Take it away.
For the kind words as well, thank you.
And she did agree possible, possibly to do an interpretive dance or TikTok dance about the budget, but I can't confirm if it'll happen. We'll have to wait and see.
Oh, see, we're adding moves already. I love it. Thank you. So we're going to get started with FY22 pre-audit recap. As Dr. Biden mentioned, we're not quite done with the audit yet, but a few great things happened last year. So CPPRT, Corporate Personal Property Replacement Tax, which is driven by economic
Activity.
Activity, thank you. Came in much stronger than anticipated, which was really great news. And transportation reimbursement, we talked about this probably at the committee of the whole. Generally, the state prorates the reimbursement on transportation reimbursement, but one unexpected item is that we received special education transportation at 100%. So that was really great news for us. I don't know that we'll expect that again, but that was wonderful to see last year. So while CPPRT and transportation came in higher than expected, we did spend less in ESSER. We had budgeted more than we spent. So overall expenditures came, I'm sorry, revenues came in a little bit under budget.
Say it again, you, we spent more than we budgeted?
No, we received more CPPRT and
Right, how about ESSER?
We spent less than we bud, did I say more?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. We spent less, so we received less revenue. We also had less expenditures on ESSER, which will mean, as we go through this, you'll see that there are ESSER expenditures in the FY23 budget. So as a result, revenues came in slightly lower than budgeted. Expenditures also came in lower than budgeted, and as always, these are preliminary. We continue with our auditors. There'll be some changes from one year to the next based on timing of receipts, so there may be some changes as we get closer to the end of that, again, within the next month or so. So here's a recap for you. We've got the original budget numbers, revenues, expenditures, and we budgeted about $2.4 million for a surplus. Our pre-audit actuels at this time are coming in with a $5.3 million surplus, so we're coming in a little higher than we anticipated. And as historically we do, if with any surplus dollars, we'll discuss moving money into the Capital Projects Fund, so we'll have an opportunity to talk about that at the next Finance Committee meeting, and then, of course, that'll come to the full board. Okay, legal requirements for a budget adoption. We only do this once a year, so it's really good to sort of remind ourselves of what the process is. We're required to adopt our budget by the end of the first quarter this year, which is September 30th. Prior to doing that, we will put the tentative budget on public display for at least 30 days, so that would happen tomorrow. And then we also will conduct a public hearing, which we've scheduled for September 6th. Okay, let's move into revenues for FY23. This breakdown here is consistent with what we're used to seeing. Of course, local revenue is our largest source. State follows, which consists of grants, categorical reimbursements, and evidence-based funding, and then, of course, federal revenue, which is grants and national school lunch dollars. Little more detail on the revenues. Operating revenue is budgeted to increase 3.9%. This does not include ESSER dollars. What it does include, though, are some new grant dollars that we've received. We were awarded almost $900 in new grants.
$900?
Thousand dollars.
There we go.
Every single time my practice quit, I said $900. You'd think I would have gotten it.
She's down to the penny.
$900, exactly, $900,000. So we received two competitive grants, which is amazing, as well as additional dollars for IDEA and McKinney-Ventle Homeless. That's coming to us through American Rescue Plan, which is where ESSER dollars came from. So when we receive additional grant dollars, we're also going to have additional expenditures. We need to comply with supplement, not supplant, rules, which means that we need to spend new dollars with these new dollars. We need to have new expenditures. We can't offset current expenditures with these new dollars.
I just want to reinforce, board, this is really cool, what our colleagues have done to be able to get these competitive grants, and it's really great for students in our district. So while we're sort of delivering that message as part of the budget, it's really awesome work that other folks in the district have done to bring these grant dollars in.
Yes, absolutely. And as we traditionally have in the past, for at least the last several years, we're continuing to budget for categorical payments, three current, one late. Maybe one day the state will catch up. That doesn't happen to be right now. And as discussed at the committee of the whole meeting, D-Sub issuance is retained in operating funds. And again, this year, our federal revenue is projected higher than in past years due to ESSER. As we move into next year and the following years, we'll be having some different conversations, talking about federal revenue likely being lower. However, ESSER $3 can be spent through fiscal year '23, '24, so we may have some dollars next year, depending on our spending for this year. Non-operating revenues. Our final bond issuance was done in April of 2022, so we do not have any referendum revenue in this year's budget. Okay, moving into expenditures. This also probably looks pretty familiar. As typical salaries and benefits make up the majority of our expenditures, our next largest category would be purchase services, and a fair bit of that comes from transportation. Few more details. So what you'll see here is a comparison from, or seeing the impact of year-over-year increases. We have both ESSER impact and without ESSER. Looking at these numbers, we have to be a little bit careful in interpreting these because grant dollars can make such a big impact. So what I wanted to mention is, if we take a look at the Education Fund, where most of our dollars are spent, pulling out all of the grants, we were able to meet the expectation of a 0% increase on purchase services, supplies, and capital outlay with our local funds. Even with, of course, pandemic increases in costs, we were still able to maintain that 0% in the Ed Fund on those categories. Non-operating expenditures, while we don't have referendum revenue, we certainly have the expenditures. I have $48.3 million budgeted. Of course, construction timing may impact when those dollars are actually spent. And then since revenues have been received in prior fiscal years, will be reflecting a negative fund balance for this budget, sorry.
A negative operate, a negative operating result.
A negative operating result.
Deficit.
Thank you.
All-fund deficit.
Yes, because we will have no revenue coming in this fiscal year, but we will have a lot of expenditures. So the dollars are in the fund balance, but for this year's budget, it'll be reflected with a deficit.
We normally talk about the operating funds, and we take a look at the operating budget and talk about, is that balanced and how that works? Part of what we're going to talk about in a little bit will be some different formatting on some of the information we're providing, including a different budget document. And that also includes a little more highlighting of the all-funds result, which includes the Capital Projects Fund. So that can be a little confusing at first. We will still primarily during our presentations and the day-to-day work that we do be talking about operating results and our operating funds. But just as Sarah said, when you issue bonds in one fiscal year and then you spend the money in the next fiscal year, you generate on an all-fund basis a huge surplus in one year and then a huge deficit in the next year. It doesn't mean that that's a problem, that's just a timing issue on revenues and expenses. So when you look on an all-fund basis, that can be a little confusing. But again, we've historically focused just on the operating funds, and you'll primarily hear us talking about that as our focus as we go forward.
Thank you.
In terms of our kind of public-facing documents, we'll focus on operating?
We will include both as we move forward, and we will make sure that we talk about that in, within that document, so that everyone's clear as to, here's how that works and what the difference are in these.
And of course, as you know, referendum funds must be used only on referendum-approved purposes. So the budget that we have been reviewing this evening has an operating revenue of about $170 million. Factoring in expenditures and operational transfers, we are ending with a tentative $1.79 million surplus. Keep in mind, these numbers may change a bit. We do our best to minimize any adjustments between tentative and final, but if we get any new information from the state or otherwise, there may be some changes to this.
So I talked about a new budget document, and I think this is something that's really cool for our district. Sarah has taken the lead in developing a new budget format for us. Our, one of our goals is to apply for and receive the Meritorious Budget Award. This is a recognition by ASBO International for those districts that produce the highest quality budget documents, sharing information among school districts around the world. And there are a number of districts in our area that have, that regularly receive this. In fact, I think it was either Schaumburg or Palatine just recently had something like 30 years of consecutive awards for this. So we felt it's time 30 years of consecutive awards for this. So we felt it's time for Barrington to show on our budgeting work that we are a leader, just like we are in educating children. And so what we want to do is provide more information in a better format for our board and for our community. So this document that we have for you on a tentative basis is actually just one of the sections that will be in the final budget document. So there's a lot of other information around what we do in the district, how our district is structured and, and is operated that goes along with this. And then this section provides all of the information that we've provided in the past and then some. So all in all, it's significantly more information that we're providing and wrapping around our budgeting process to provide clarity. So, yeah, so that's actually all the bullet points I've got up there, but I am really excited about the work that Sarah is doing to take us forward and move us forward with this. And just as a, a little added pressure for Board, once she's done with this, the next step is on the other side of the fence, it's on our actual results. There's a Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is also recognition that what we do in sharing our actual results is, is really at the cutting edge, is the best of the best in doing that. So that is the next thing that I've asked her to look at after we submit for the Meritorious Budget Award later this fall. So, next steps. So what we have, again, is similar to what we've done before. We've got the tentative budget now. When we get a thumbs up from you that we're good to go forward posting this, we'll post this out on our website, make it available for public inspection. The first board meeting in September, we'll have a budget hearing, as is required by law. The second meeting in September, we would, you would have the opportunity to consider the final budget. And then, once approved, we would share that information with the appropriate regulatory bodies, as well as post the final budget on our website. Following that, this year, it's a little bit different because it's our first time going through this process for the Meritorious Budget Award. We will be then assembling everything all together and submitting that. It's due in October, is that correct?
Ninety days from the budget approval, so December.
Okay, so December. So within 90 days of the final budget adoption, our goal would be to submit for the Meritorious Budget Award in future years with the entire document together. It's a lot easier to do the updates on that, rather than you're starting from scratch and you're building the whole thing. So we think that would go much faster. You'd be seeing at, at the final budget adoption that we would really have that whole budget document together for you. We can't do that this year because it's not all ready yet, but we would in future years. Did I hit it all?
You did. And there'll be plenty of links in it because it'll be a very long document, so don't worry.
Yep. So, so with that, that concludes our, our budget presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board?
So my favorite thing is, at the bottom of each page, you can click, go back to the, to the outline at the beginning. So you can like, instead of scrolling, you can just go boop, and it goes right back to the top. That was, that's very nice.
Thank you.
In addition to like, the real numbers and the real truth-
Of course, absolutely.
The truth are nice, but the real news is most important.
Sometimes usability features, though, really make a difference.
Yes.
For sure.
In a 60-page document.
This is great. Where will it be on the website? What, what will it be under?
It's, it's in the Business Services section.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm. And we should have some historical budget documents and audit reports there as well.
I would assume when we send the summary out the following day, there'll be a link in the email address to, or I'm sorry, in the email to provide, you know, open access to readers of that email, correct?
We certainly can do that, yeah.
Okay.
Excellent.
Great work, Board members.
Good luck on the Meritorious Award. I hope, hope it all goes well. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next discussion item is Barrington High School Fall Arrival and Dismissal Plans. I'm assuming we've got a couple people coming up for this?
Yes, indeed. Steve and I are going to tag team.
To start the presentation, no board member traffic between 7:45 and 8:30 in front of this. That's your part. Don't come in-
That's our-
Don't break my child.
Every car helps, Steve.
Bicycles. Get your bicycle out. Get that bicycle.
I made a good point, yeah.
Yeah, get the bike.
May have noticed, in addition to our school construction projects, there is a Lake County Department of Transportation project occurring on Hart Road that we learned about in the late spring, right before school ended last school year. So we started working as a group because we knew we couldn't solve this problem alone as a school district. So starting in June, we started a series of meetings throughout the summer, bringing in a bunch of different individuals to help us with this, including partnering with our Village of Barrington, Barrington Transportation Company, the Police Department here in town, and then also working with both Lake County and IDOT to help us control signals and so forth, to really look at this from a lot of different angles, to try to come up with some solutions. And again, I'm going to say this at the beginning of the presentation, at the end, we are, we came up with a plan to try to help ease congestion and access to Barrington High School. This is not a complete plan. This is going to help alleviate some of the traffic. But just like what occurred in the summer, when we had students attending Barrington High School for summer school, we're going to continue every day to monitor and make adjustments to help as the plan un, you know, unfolds and we start to have students visit and parents Barrington High School. We had a small version of it during summer school, right? We had several hundred peo-, you know, students attending. We're now going to be looking at a couple thousand students coming to Barrington High School when school starts next Monday. So I want to step through, first, there's really two parts to this presentation. The traffic patterns, to help the Board and our committee understand traffic patterns at Barrington High School. And then Steve's going to cover some of the new lots and places where students and parents can bring their students without having to get all the way to Barrington High School. So the first part is about student drop-off and pickup, right? So if you are a student coming to Barrington High School and you have your parking in the West Lot, you will be able to access and park along the west side of the high school. Or if you're a parent driving your student to Barrington High School, as indicated by the blue lines on here, we're going to have you come in off of Hart Road. The road is closed, but it's closed just north of our stoplight there. So you'll still be able to enter the high school from the stoplight. We'll run you through the parking lot and back up around the loop and then back out. Okay? So if you're coming to Barrington High School, that's where student drop-off will occur and pickup in the afternoon. If you are on a bus and you are coming to Barrington High School from the north, so we have several routes that occur up between Lake Barrington, Fox River Grove, Tower Lakes, everything north of the high school. Those routes will navigate to Barrington High School. But then they will be coming in to Hart Road and navigating down to the lower lot at Field of Dreams, okay? We practiced it. We actually brought several buses on a day in the summer to see how many we could stack in there. Would they be able to make the turn radius? We trimmed trees. We did everything we could, not making this up, to really just try to access as much as we could and come up with a plan. Because we knew those routes already had, are coming from a long distance. And then to try to get them into, you know, the village itself and down Lake Cook Road, they could be sitting on the buses trying to get into the building. So rather than do that, because it's still open, that Field of Dreams Drive is still open and accessible, you know, before the construction begins, we can bring our buses down in there. So if you're on a bus and you're coming from the north, you will navigate down, your, your bus stop will actually drop you off at the lower lot at Field of Dreams. And the rest of our buses that are coming from the south or east and west will navigate to Barrington High School, and they will be able to access the front of the school. I know you've seen the construction fences have gone up. We've started some construction and demolition out in front. And so that lot, we have taken a portion of that lot out in order to accommodate the construction that's going on and keep students and visitors away from the construction with the fences that have gone up. But buses will still be able to navigate around the back of the high school, the Ring Road, we call it, right? So they'll be able to come in off of Lake Cook, navigate the east side of the high school, back around, and then be able to exit the high school at the stoplight on Hart Road, and then head back down, either heading east or west on, on Main Street. Some of those visitor spots that were in the front of the high school, those have been moved to the front row of the West Lot. They've been marked, right, adjacent to where the tennis courts are, if you're familiar with that. That front row there, visitor parking from up front has been moved over there. So those are the three things that, you know, we thought about and considered as far as students driving themselves with approved parking on the campus itself, and where would they need to go. And then, what would, what could we do to adjust some of our bus traffic? Because oftentimes, our, our buses are sitting in the same traffic as our parents and, and our community members. So we wanted to start there, but we knew that that wasn't going to be enough. So now going to turn it over to Steve, and he's going to talk about some new opportunities for students to park in different areas around the village.
Okay. So, let me click again. We've been working with the Village of Barrington and some of our partners to identify lots. The three lots that have been identified are the commuter lot in the center of town, the Barrington Bourne complex, which is a rental facility right next to Wickstrom. Many of us that have been around for a while know that, know that as the space the GE Capital rented for a while, so right there on Route 14. And then St. Matthew's Church on Dundee Avenue has graciously offered up 100 spots in their parking lot. We've worked with Barrington Transportation to coordinate a shuttle bus service to and from those spaces. So in two of the spaces, the Barrington Bourne and the Barrington Commuter Lot, will offer both drop-off and parking there, drop-off, pickup, and parking. And the St. Matthew's lot is a little bit tighter of a facility. There isn't a lot of room for cars and, and parents to stack up there. So that is strictly a parking lot for students that sign up for our parking space. We're also communicating an incentive program. We've shared that with our families. We'll talk with the parents from freshman orientation tomorrow and really emphasize, please take the bus if that's an option for you. Similar to last year, when we were trying to build climate and community, we did some, some raffles, some giveaways to students. So we've got some things that they like, some Barrington swag, t-shirts, some, some technology, AirPods. The students really responded to some gift ideas around homecoming as well that included hair and makeup options or opportunities, and then nights out, experiential-type things. So we'll put together some of those gift card pieces out of some fundraising that we do. We plan on that every year anyway, so actually Philly football. And the proceeds from that will help to support that. And we've got a couple of bigger items that we're going to, we're going to put out there as a splash as well. Last year, we gave two PS5s, which was a really big deal. You couldn't find them, but we found a couple of them. So we've got an ideas, a couple of ideas around that to really just incentivize the students and reward them for helping us to be good neighbors and good community members and reduce the traffic in town. And then I think it's also important to emphasize that this is all parking by permit. So if parents are interested, students are interested, if they go to the BHS web store where they pay student fees and such, parking permits are available through that. We will have our first kind of set of those stickers we'll be giving out on Friday. So we'll be communicating with those that have purchased those permits probably tomorrow or Thursday, and asking them to come by and pick up a hanging tag. So the hanging tags are color-coded. That will help the, the village kind of police who's there. It's not open to everybody to park. And we'll also keep that window open. So I imagine that some people maybe on the first day are maybe going to dip a toe in. Although I would encourage them not to, it is going to be a challenge to move around Barrington. So, you know, take our word for it and use some of these remote locations. But for those that maybe change their mind next week, that option should still be available for them until our spots are full. So we have a shuttle service located in these three areas. We plan to have them leave for the Barrington High School parking lot from the remote lots at 8:00. So that will get them into our parking lots and plenty of time for students to make it to class. Just as a reminder, the shuttles that are on the north side of campus and the commuter lot, so the Barrington Bourne and the commuter lot, they will drop off actually in Field of, Fields of Dreams. That'll be the quickest route in for them. So this, the, the time that it takes to walk will be more than made up for that by the time it's lost, sitting in traffic, trying to get to our traditional bus drop-off. And then finally, for St. Matthew's, that bus will actually drop off near the pool entrance, the pool hallway entrance, which is our traditional bus drop-off. And then things reverse, going back for the end of the day. So we'll take those shuttle buses from the drop-off point and then go back to the, the remote parking areas. And we anticipate that they'll make it back to those remote areas approximately at 3:50. That's an estimate, but we're going to prioritize them to get out as quick as possible, put them at the front of the, the front of the queue so that they get there quickly. So this is just some mapping of, of what we're looking at. For all of these spaces, there are some pretty particular entry areas for student safety and just organization of things. So this is that Barrington Bourne area. You can see the, the parking area and the, and the bus pickup area. We have visited all of these spaces with representatives of Barrington Transportation in the community, just to make sure that we've got good traffic flow and that it's safe. We've assigned an adminis-, an administrator to be there for at least the first week to kind of work out some of the, the issues that always pop up. And, and then we're also assigning supervision to those areas before and after school so that we've got a safety focus on that.
In addition, Chief Dorn has made equipment to have officers at these three lots as well. So we'll have school officials and police presence at these lots, just to help supervise students as they're coming in and either being dropped off or parking.
And this is the, the commuter lot, obviously. The commuter lot is kind of open parking. They haven't given a specific area. As long as there's an open spot, they can park there with a tag. The actual bus pickup, drop-off, and then the, the drop-off area for students is, is the actual train depot. So there's some shelter there as well. So students needing to navigate their way towards those buses. We have, through the registration process, tried to keep a real close track of how many students we anticipate to park, how many riders they will have, and then how many drop-offs we have. So, so that we can size-right the number of shuttle buses that we have as well. So for all three locations, we'll, we'll base our shuttles on that. And then finally, St. Matthew's has dedicated about a third of their lots. They have some, they need to keep some spaces open for some events that they host during the day. But again, we'll have somebody out there to help students navigate that.
So as I mentioned at the beginning, we've been meeting, coming up with different plans, and we'll continue to monitor this and adjust during those first few days and weeks of school. So we continue to watch the traffic patterns and make any adjustments that we can to try to ease the congestion here in town.
I have a question. Since I'm, since I'm apparently not allowed to bring my son in the morning. First of all, I want to say, I was here during summer school, and you worked so hard, and it was chaos those first few days, but you guys turned that around, and it was really impressive. So while I may have been cursing you day one, I was not by the end, by the end of the week.
We did learn a lot. So as we were, as we were going through summer school, we learned quite a few things. We have applied those principles to our plan here. And so thank you for being guinea pigs. Apologize for a little bit of delay in the, in the early summer.
No problem. Okay, so as I, first of all, awesome. As I was writing down my notes, is there, I know there's a cost to park in these locations. Is there a cost to drop your student off for them to take the shuttle?
So there is no cost for the- So there is no cost for the shuttle. It is just a cost to park.
And then I'm assuming, I think you may have said this, I'm assuming on the north side, parents cannot drop off at the Field of Dreams. They can only drop off at the shuttle locations.
Correct.
Okay, so they're not going to be allowing cars to come down and...
Only allowing buses to come down into Field of Dreams.
I think we should restate that, parents, you might not come to Field of Dreams.
Yes. We'll have an officer.
Okay. And then lastly, football games. I'm psyched Friday night lights. Is there a plan? I mean, I know we all...
We're going to have them.
I know we're going to have them.
Let's go.
Let's go.
What do you recommend people do?
So we've got strategies that we put into place for large events. We will, particularly for that first game on the ninth, we'll expand those out. And so we've done some things like having a crossing guard here, right here at the district office building, so that we can use the lots behind. So we'll get those out. I think the bigger piece is communication that goes along with it. I'm probably more concerned with those that aren't familiar with the high school and kind of understanding that it is going to be a little bit of chaos. So we will try to share that information, certainly with our folks. And I believe we have Maine South the first game, and get that information to them. So, you know, hopefully, we'll continue to have a good partnership with the parking behind this building here, and that's really where our overflow is going to be.
That path's not lit. Can people park at Field of Dreams, or is it not lit to walk at night?
So the path and the parking area is really not suitable for a lot of parking. So there is a donut that is created for the buses to drop off and pick up, but there is quite a bit of construction and construction phasing areas or just storage. So there isn't a lot of parking available anyway. There should be adequate lighting. That's one of the things that we're going to have to kind of take a look at. They're actively working on that space now, so kind of things are phasing in and out. So just have to look. But I don't anticipate that being a good parking spot for anybody. That's why we're not letting students up there, and that's why we don't want drop-off.
Because remember, all the construction at Field of Dreams, all those contractors, all those vehicles will be parked up there.
Because most people park over in those buildings, but you can get a problem.
So Steve's being a little bit cautious, because we're trying to communicate this plan, and then we will communicate, because we are working on where those other locations could be for football, but we thought if we sent too much information out at once, people are just going to be overloaded. So just, how about stay tuned on that.
You're not worried about the scrimmage this Friday? You're not too worried because it'll be the lesser crowd?
Not really worried about the scrimmage this week. I mean, it kind of is what it is, that we've got our lots, we've got our spaces, we should have everything cleaned up. So we'll be maxed out in terms of having spaces available. So I think we'll be fine. I think we'll be fine. Friday night, Friday night football is always a challenge for us, and one of the challenges that we run into is lighting down Hart Road. So a lot of those spaces, like the 600 Building, Hamilton Partners is the old, isn't a great place for parking. And really, we haven't had an agreement for them or with them to park. So those that have chosen to park there in recent years have done it on their own volition. Part of it is because the Hart Road isn't lit very well. So we try to encourage people to park on this side, and we do have relationships with what was PepsiCo and Pepper behind us, so that gives us quite a bit of overflow. There's quite a lot of space behind us, so we will continue to develop those.
To be clear, people who do the shuttle, do they have to sign up ahead of time to do the shuttle?
Yes, so we did share that out through our Bronco Blast, and each parent's got an individual email, and the signup is really just for accounting purposes.
I understand.
So we know how many buses, but we've got a plan. If families show up and drop off and they didn't sign up, we've got kind of a sweeper plan in place. If we're planning on 35 and we have 65, we've got a plan being placed to help to make sure students get to school. They may be a little late, but we'll get them there.
Do the 8:00 AM shuttle stagger at all, or once the, once 8:00 AM is done and they're, they've taken off your, you drive at 8:05 or 8:10, it's not, you're not going to be able to catch one?
We don't want to stagger.
You know, okay.
We don't want to have a stagger.
So they're all going to take off at...
So right now, we don't have multiple shuttles coming from any of those spaces. We only need one shuttle at this point. So we'll see what happens this week. Maybe we do have multiple shuttles that go through. We don't want to train negative behavior, though. So negative behavior of showing up 10 minutes late and, well, the bus will wait for me, that can't be the case, right? So for either of the drop-off from St. Matthew's, it's going to take some time to navigate to our lots. And then for the metro station and for the Barrington Born building, we may be able to get into Field of Dreams quickly, but it's going to take five or 10 minutes for students to be able to get from that parking lot to their classes. It's not, you know, door-to-door service, so.
Think 7:50, students.
Think 7:50.
Yeah, good point.
I guess I'm mostly concerned about the Barrington Born, right? Because there's really no way to walk from there, right? If you show up late, so.
Actually, there is. So the sidewalk last summer that went runs along there, and it does run down now to Field of Dreams. That's where the sidewalk project ended last summer. Now, remember, after the bridge is in, that sidewalk then will extend all the way down to Main Street and along the high school property next summer. So there is a...
Go to the light?
There is a sidewalk that they could get to the light, cross over, and then take the sidewalk down into Field of Dreams. So it's not ideal, but I just wanted to...
7:50.
Yes, 7:50. To see this point, we had a lot of conversations about this. We're just afraid if we have multiple shuttles, you know, I just had a child graduate, maybe we should be like, you know, that 8:10 shuttle sounds better than 8 o'clock. It's an 8 o'clock departure, but we're going to offer grace, obviously, as we're starting this thing initially, right? So.
Have you guys considered, maybe this is a west-only exit off of Hart in the morning, sending everybody west?
We have discussions about it. I think that's one of the things that we're going to monitor, if we need to actually control where the flow is going, to not send people back into the gridlock. That was one of the things that we discussed, could be another step.
So the incentive, how are we going to enter people into the raffle and things like that? Are they going to be scanned in when they get on the bus? Is that how we're going to do it, the number of times?
So we scan students out of the buses already. So they're required to produce their IDs. So that will be one process. And then we also want to reward those that are walking. So we scan students in at the front entrance. So presumably, there isn't a parking lot around there. We'll be able to scan them in, and, you know, we'll look for trends, trends on bus riding and determine who's qualified for a shot at the raffle and go from there.
But you're right, it is a, the more you participate...
The more you participate, the more you, okay? And so for those folks that, like, got to repeat it how many times, Erin, to make sure everybody hears it? No parking or drop-off at the Field of Dreams, right? So there's no high schoolers that even have parking this first few months until...
Bus only.
It's bus only. And those that are going to use the lots, we're going to reward them. Those that are walking, we're going to reward them, or bike or whatever, we're going to reward them. People who have parking permits at the high school will still be allowed to use them in the main lot, but they can choose, in addition, to park remotely.
And it's open to sophomores also, for those remote lots, which we normally...
Come first serve.
One last question. I know you're saying you want, because I just clicked on the link. If I were to just be dropping my son off at, let's say, the one on 14, but he's not parking there, my only option here is to pay the $100. How do I let you know that he's just...
So when you go through and actually process that, the only way that our payment format will allow us to do that is to have a fee on it, and then when you go in and actually go to pay it, it will be a negative. It will be negative 100 for that selection.
Okay, so just want to make sure parents know to do it by either of...
By Friday, you want to know by Friday, right? Is that right?
As soon as possible. For that, we can continue to roll through. So let me just summarize a couple of things, because I think there are some key issues here. Okay, number one, the front parking lot, the entrance off of Lake Cook Road, probably beginning on Thursday, if not tomorrow, will be for faculty, staff, buses, and construction traffic only. So we've had a number of people, and that's one of the issues we ran into in summer school, is a lot of people were using that front lot. It will be closed to students and parents for drop-off. All parents and student traffic should be using the west parking lot, the Hart Road entrance, to access the school, and that will actually be a pattern until the front of the building is constructed, hopefully next summer. Next year at this time, hopefully, we're having a different conversation about what that, what that looks like. That is strictly a safety, safety issue for us. So safety behind the building for student drop-off on the bus, students walking from the Hart Road from Field of Dreams, and construction traffic. So, and it makes things a whole lot smoother in the west lot. The west parking lot is for seniors only in terms of parking. They have already registered their parking and paid for it. We have three levels of parking. A, Group A will be not parking in the lot for the first six weeks. They would have typically rotated out to FOD. Group B and C will be allowed in for the first six weeks. Then we rotate Group B out for the second six weeks, and then we rotate Group C out for the third six weeks. Students must pick up their sticker, their placard, by Friday in order to be able to park on Monday. If they don't have their hanging tag on Monday, we will not let them into the lot. We just need to be able to supervise that space, and we know, well, I'm going to get my hanging tag. We just, we don't have the space to be able to allow that. We've communicated that multiple times to families, and we'll do it again this week to make sure that we get that. For those that couldn't make it on Friday, we are making arrangements to make sure. So just trying to make everything as smooth as possible on Monday, and one of the ways of doing that is just making sure we've got things documented.
Imagine also, like you go to a concert, we've created new large signage to make this about as clear as possible of where you should and shouldn't go. So you'll actually start to see that go up tomorrow, because we have freshman orientation. And working with the village, it also is a benefit, but not just for our families and our students to start to see that before school starts Monday, but just the community to know, like, oh, that's going to be closed, and this is where the traffic's going to be heading, so they can start to make those decisions, too. So we will have a lot of additional signage right around Barrington High School. You'll start to see that go up.
And thank you, everybody, for your patience. We're going to need a lot of that the first couple of days here as we kind of settle, but I appreciate that.
So let's say your student is sick or has a doctor's appointment, you have to pick them up. They come out of the nurse's office and walk past the tennis courts over to the other lot, and you wait for them over by the football stadium?
Correct. Not by the football stadium, by the tennis. That's where our visitor spots will be.
But you come in from that side?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And it'll be, okay, and that's where the, like, back in there, the little parking lot? Is that what you mean?
No, as you pull in, so as you pull in to the parking lot towards the tennis courts, you will see there is a clear sign that says, "Visitor Parking Here," and it's the whole row that's facing the tennis courts on the building side. And we've got a nice pathway through. It's ADA compliant, so everything is in place for that to work.
So a late arrival parent bringing the student, same thing, drops them there, they walk, they walk the sidewalk to the attendance?
Correct.
To the front entrance?
Correct.
Okay, because that's confusing for people even without this, what to do. So just to, I've had a lot of people over the years ask me, what do I do? Where do I get my student? And it might be a nice thing to remind people, too.
You could definitely do that.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My goodness.
People's updated, as things are moving along here.
We will.
Thank you. Okay, so next discussion item is agenda items for September 6th. Anybody have anything? Let's see what we've got on here. Yes, we got the public hearing we just talked about, approve the TRS SSP employer participation agreement, an update on Framework 220, next steps, and our board priorities. And I think we should have protocols ready, too. Probably should do two separate, I guess, I can't imagine. Okay, so I did hear from Angela about some potential items that she wanted me to bring forward, so I can just share what she had, what she had requested. Well, I'm just going to read what she wrote to me. While many issues on the agenda undoubtedly arise again, I do want to ask that one issue in particular is reviewed and reassessed by the administration and by our board as well. And that issue is the selection and review process of publications in our libraries. While Angela does not personally agree with the decision of the Book Review Committee on its own recent review, she respects the decision as outlined in our current library review process, however, believes this process itself has flaws and requires some updating. So hopefully, we can discuss this in the future. She's got a couple of points here. If you want me to read them, I can. Some of them were already stated earlier in the meeting. So...
The question I have is, selection process or the review process? So if we can get clarification on that, I would appreciate it.
I mean, I think we have talked a couple of times about, okay, now we got to handle on the review process, but maybe we do need to start at the inception as having a bit greater idea of what criteria our librarians, I mean, not to micromanage them, but just to understand them.
Board want to talk about the selection process at a future board meeting?
And as our lawyer recommended, I think we do want to look at the review process. Once everything's kind of calmed down, I think we do want to figure out if we want to make any changes in that.
Potentially streamline it.
Yes.
Do we have any other books under review right now?
Yes.
Two, right?
I only...
Two, yeah.
Okay, so maybe we want to get through those books before we look at the review process, and we can get ourselves in a spiral here.
But then what if there are more that come up?
Right.
Can this keep going on? That's...
I think we draw the line to say in the two that have already been submitted, we review with this current process. And then for anything that comes submitted from, you know, tonight on, we'll, I guess we'll have to hold while that process is being reviewed. Is that something that, I don't know, actually, as I said out loud, does that make sense? Or do we draw lines in the standard in the future and say, anything submitted after this date, let's say, September 15th?
When do we anticipate those, the books that are currently under review coming forward?
Yes, you'll have those by the next board meeting.
Okay.
The next board meeting.
The recommendations by the committees will be submitted before Thursday of this coming week.
I think district level committee.
The district level.
At the district level. So that's pretty quick, that's in two weeks. I'm not even sure, I mean, I won't hear from what people have emailed, what books are under review.
Are we able to say, then, that anything that's submitted after today will be delayed until September 6th? I mean, it's two weeks away.
It's going to have to be after September 6th.
I want to make sure we understand what we're doing with these two books first, if you can just hold that back.
I'm sorry.
What are we doing with these two, these two books first? Are we going to take action on September 6th, or do we want to give ourselves some time to...
Well, if we, we would need a chance to read both books, presumably, too.
Okay.
So I think two weeks is very tight.
I would agree. That's why I'm asking the question.
You know, Dr. Fuller, how, I actually haven't read these two books yet. How long are these books approximately? Do you know off the top of your head?
One of them is a middle-school level book, the other one is a longer book. Melissa, I think you have them on your desk. Do you remember the page counts on these?
I would say one is about 300 pages and the other one about 200.
Is it basically...
We know the name of the book, so we're not allowed to know until it...
It's flamer, and this is, this book is gay.
I'm sorry, what?
It's flamer, and this book is gay.
Oh, okay. I didn't even know we...
I want to make sure, is that, are those the two books?
Yes. Okay. I was going to say, this book took a day. I mean, are those books along the same lines, like, graphic?
No.
Okay, okay, got it.
So do we feel like the first meeting in October, we would be able to have read those books? Is that fair?
I think the question is, do you want to see the review before you make a decision on whether it's coming to a board agenda or not? That's...
That's fair, too.
Okay, so we'd have the recommendation by the district committee before...
Sounds like Thursday.
Before? The next Thursday?
So we put it in the weekly.
Okay.
And then a decision needs to be made whether we want to bring it to the agenda or not.
Okay, so is that fair? So everybody watch for that?
Sorry, what did you say?
This book is gay, is 320 pages, and flamer is 368.
368?
We have a meeting on the 20th also, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Watch, did you say this Thursday or the next Thursday?
Them to be ready by this coming Thursday for the board packet.
See what the recommendation is, and then if you guys can get back to Dr. Hunter, right, with, with the time you think you need to read the book or not read the book accordingly. And then we'll...
The I. We don't have a board packet this coming Thursday. It's, this Thursday would just be the Dr. Hunt's.
Our next board meeting is like three weeks away, so it's two weeks off.
So we'll have for the next board meeting, the Thursday before the next board meeting?
Well, and maybe...
You will have it in the weekly, you will have it in the weekly this Thursday.
In two days.
In two days.
Then maybe we should say the October meeting is when we would like to talk about our review process. And then that way, we've set a hard date. We know we'll have gotten through these two.
How much time do you need, though, to prepare a discussion?
Again, selection process or review process?
Well, I think we are talking about two, currently, I'm talking about review process.
Well, I don't see why we can't talk about the review process at the next board meeting while we're concurrently reviewing. Just to kind of get this process going. I think we could add both, the selection and review process, to the next meeting, provided that it's, you know, it's conducive.
I think we should do them separate.
Yeah, we got to open the...
It's already confusing enough right now. I'd like to keep them separate.
I mean, I, we have some initial feedback, you know, some legal feedback on our review process. Can we start there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So since the books were already, I want to make sure this is clear, since the books have already been through the review process and we'll get the recommendation, we can consider looking at the review process even at the next board meeting.
If we made any changes, though, would that apply? Would the new review process apply to these two books under review?
The review process will be complete. That's why I just said, they will be already be complete. The recommendation will become, have already come to us.
Oh, I see. So we would, okay, okay. So we would...
And I think we would all agree that we want to have a discussion before we take any action on any review process changes?
Yes.
One question I would have with the review process is, what time commitment these review processes take? How long would it take you just to kind of put together the, you know, the analysis of the review processes that currently exist?
Well, we have some initial feedback on the review process. What I have not engaged with the experts in the field in this, I have not talked to the district library, you know, representative, or anybody in the library. So that's the only piece that I hesitate with. So...
Because I mean, school's starting, and they're busy. So, you know, I don't want to take them away from their main, you know, responsibilities, which are students.
Can we target the second meeting?
The second meeting, September? Is everybody okay with that?
To talk about the review process?
To talk about the review process going forward. Then are we okay, if any book comes up before then, it would wait for any adjustments we would make?
Yes, I think we should do that.
Those adjustments would be made likely in October, right? We'll review it in like, in the second meeting in September. That's like the 20th, I think? I think the meeting in September is the 20th?
And if these two books, when the review process is complete, if these two books get moved to us, we'll concurrently, like, review and read and be prepared to vote if necessary?
Yes. But that would not be until at least the October meetings, because we want to give ourselves time to read.
Yes, please.
Depending on what the recommendation is, right? You may feel you need to or not. Okay. Do I need to repeat that one more time?
No.
You got it? So then we can entertain selection criteria, after we get through these, the review?
Correct.
Review and these books.
Yep.
Slow and steady. Make sense? Anything else for September 6th? I lost my spot here. Okay. I'm going to just double check, see if there's anything else.
We're thinking Framework 220 would probably be better at the September 21st meeting rather than the September 6th, to be able to give an update on where we're at with Framework. Oh, referendum, I'm sorry.
Bill 220?
Yeah.
We were, we were thinking, yeah.
Bill 220.
Framework, Bill.
Yeah, we were thinking referendum, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying, Dr. Hunt. Too many 220s.
Okay.
I was thinking the same, that's what I was reading.
So on the 20th, you're going to do...
Back to referendum. Did we, did we change the dates of when the information nights are at the elementaries? And is that something, because there was, I think we talked about that it was going to be a back-to-school nights, but then it wasn't. And so what, what's the final word on that?
Consulting with the principals, we're going to keep the dates as identified, but do them in person.
Rescind that to us, please.
That is for the schools that haven't had the construction yet, is that correct?
Correct.
So we've got lines?
North Barrington?
North Barrington.
And Rose.
If I remember correctly, they were like, day one, day two, day three, they were kind of smooshed together as far as like... Okay, sorry.
ELC is one of the four schools remaining, but that's really a facility. There's not a design review, so we...
We don't need a...
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah. So just to clarify, there are four, you're right. But the, the three that we're doing our community presentation for those schools is the three elementaries that were new. And after consulting with the principals, between incorporating on the same night, having more than multiple things, they preferred to stay with the nights that they've communicated to their PTO and so forth that were identified.
3:30 in the afternoon, wasn't it? It was like daytime. It wasn't nighttime, if I'm remembering correctly.
Because that's...
Just, just, I guess, let us know, because that's difficult, yeah.
I promise.
Because more notice is...
I'm getting a little confused with the ribbon cuttings.
Yes, it's just like a blur.
But let's just say hurrah for those ribbon cuttings this weekend. That was, that was good stuff.
Really, really good.
Exciting, really exciting to see.
One more.
All right.
Can I just ask one more thing about that? I'm sorry to... Just one more thing. Is there a way to notify the public, too, other than just the local families of the schools? Because I think the general public, what I heard, there was lots of people who came to Grove this morning. And it wasn't just families.
So there were a lot of families at Grove?
Right, and Roslin, too.
And Roslin, too. There were some community members as well. We've been putting it on the, it's on the website. I don't know if we did anything more with neighbors or not, but we had quite a few people at both. Alumni.
We did. We had former staff, alumni, bill officials attended.
Because I think the community cares. I mean, this is, this is exciting. So I don't mean to prolong the meeting, but, you know, if we can get the word out, I think it's important. Sunny Hill, 1:00 PM tomorrow.
Sunny Hill, 1:00 PM tomorrow. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
How about confidential?
Oh, thank you. It's been a long day.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve the confidentiality of closed session minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Erin Chanding?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we need a separate motion for the special confidentiality, or they, they would apply to both? The special meeting, we had a closed meeting in...
Yeah, I understand your question, but I don't know if I know the answer.
What is the question?
Does a special meeting, this is, this is not... Need another motion. Well, we didn't have it on here. So if we need it, can we capture it in the next meeting?
Let me take a look at that. Thank you, Barry.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any...